Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the committee, the whole meeting for October tenth. The town of Hinton respectfully acknowledges that it is located on the First People's traditional lands. We recognize that this traditional territory to show respect and understanding to those who walk this land since time immemorial. Today, we uphold our ongoing responsibility to work together in the spirit of the intent of the treaties with all the first peoples and nations that call this place home. The town expresses gratitude for the opportunity to build a better community on these sacred lands for generations to come. On that note, I'd like to call this meeting to order. And I'm looking to counsel any changes or deletions to the agenda.
Mister Chair, I'm wondering if we could add, call it two point five moment of silence. Just to to respect those people who were impacted by the tragedy in our community this week.
Right? Counsel, you have an addition, request to add two point five moment of silence. And is there any additions from administration? Nothing from administration, okay? So we have to vote, or we're gonna vote on the addition and then on to the agenda. So I'd like to move that we called the question that we add two point five for a moment of silence. All those in favor? Those that is carried. So look now for a motion to accept the agenda as amended. Mister Stachik.
Thank you, Mister Chair. I'd like to move that committee accept the agenda for committee at the poll for October tenth, twenty twenty-three, as amended.
Thank you. All right, call that the question. All those in favor? Oh, I guess we need to, sorry, wait for vote. My apologies. You see, quickly, this out there. He hasn't been, has amended. He added. Hey. However, I am only getting someone move, not an option to vote. I don't know if anybody else is saying.
Yeah, I moved it, Mister Chair.
Okay, there we go. Thank you. All right. So now if we can call him question, the committee adopt the agenda as amended. Please vote now. And that is carried unanimously. Okay. Mister Chair, is Counselor Race on the phone line? I don't believe so. Maybe Campbell is Counselor Race online?
I, yes, she is.
Oh, she is now.
Counselor Race, can you hear us? Can you hear us, Counselor Race? Thanks.
There we are. Thank you. So we're gonna move on to two point five, which thank you, Counsel.
Sorry, Mister Chair, their vote only records that four people voted. That's why I was asking, Counselor Race was online.
Counselor Race. We, uh, maybe we'll do the vote again for the agenda now that we have Counselor Race on there.
She wasn't on.
She wasn't on yet, so we'll, we'll, sorry, repeat that. No, I, that's perfectly fine. We're gonna, uh, revote on the agenda, just so we have all members present. And Counselor Race, are you late in too? We can vote online, okay? We can have that motion again, please. Thank you. So we're calling question now that committee adopt the agenda as amended. We could all vote now. And that is carried unanimously. Thank you. We're gonna move on to two point five, which again, thank you, Counselor McGee, for our community has suffered a tragedy uh, over the weekend, and our thoughts and prayers go out to the family and all the first responders. So if we can take a sixty-second, uh, moment of silence, please. Thank you, everyone. Hey, next on the agenda, we have citizens minimum counsel. We have any citizens who want to address counsel with any good, bad, or indifferent, if you could please state your name and speak clearly, and you have a minute. It's not a back and forth, it's just to share any thoughts or concerns. So.
I'm Melody Robson. I own Pin Ridge Village in Hinton, adult community manufacturing home park. I understand that we have something coming forward with the town today. Um, I heard just a tidbit of it being a tax thing that putting the onus on the property owner. Um, I don't think that's fair. I have great tenants who pay their taxes. Um, I can't afford that onus on me to put onto my tenants because I will have to raise their rent significantly. And I don't think that that's a fair thing to do when people in town don't pay their taxes on the property. The town can move in and make changes. And I strongly, strongly, strongly recommend that that does not happen for the perks. They understand some perks are not run like I run my park. But that onus should not be on every park. I just want you to take that into consideration, that seniors can't, I can't do that to them. Because that will be significant, because I will also add a charge for my work that I have to do to collect those taxes, to pay those taxes. And that will increase their lot rent, and that's not an onus that should be put on me. Thank you.
Thank you, Melody. Appreciate that. Uh, do we have anybody else? Uh, with the minute with counsel. Miss David Campbell, did we have anybody online?
Uh, no, yeah.
Okay. All right. So we're gonna move on to our delegations and presentations. To start us off is our Art Society of Hinton, and looking to Denise Putan. All yours.
Thanks for having us today. Um, I am Denise Putan, and the treasurer of the Homes Supply and Arts Society in Hinton, who manages the performing arts theater uh, in it at the F. I, oops. Are you doing it, Jen? Can I move this slide?
No, it's just right behind you.
Okay. Oh, I have to push it really hard.
Oh, you just gotta click the. Just use your mouse.
Oh, there we go.
Okay.
You guys, maybe.
Okay, you bet.
You do that for a day. This is going to be our facility manager, and she's the my ace in the hole, and Deb worked at all sort of us in the D C O today, so. I'm gonna get right to it. So, as you can tell, we've kind of increased our rental day spectrum. Um, you can kind of see one full year from twenty twenty-two and now for twenty twenty-three. Um, we've had pickleball approaches again, so they will be coming in, and we're around twenty-seven times. So are in, we have an increase of how many times the unit is getting used. We're glad to have pickleball back. We've been having some live music events and some good luck with comedy. Um. Oh, I don't know. The dance summits and things like that are really, they're very happy in the facility. And the parents are happy. There's not a lot of setup for them and all that kind of stuff. So we've been happy with the dance community coming over into our facility. Um, see, we have a new piano group that comes in and does their performance in a facility too, so. We're, we're getting there. We're seeing a little bit of a struggle. Um, maybe because, because of money, uh, everybody's finances are a little bit short. Some of the ticket purchases for some of the live events are a little bit down than what we would have forecasted, but you know, that's about where we're at with our facility. Think we're still in that same kind of balance as prior years. Um, again, with the revenue that we, you guys got a really good detailed printout that I sent via email, very similar to last year, probably same thing. Um, we're looking at about the same type of money coming in and going out this year. Um, our rent, which is the rent, rent is like the art clubs that rent off of us, those special rooms. Um, cinema is very similar, the live and private events that we have, we're bringing in that twenty-three thousand about. Um, we're increased on our concession, partly that's alcohol-based, and we're selling a lot more popcorn when we have our events. Um, the grants, uh, we were lucky enough to get the Culture Days grant, um, and we have just a couple little one. We haven't gotten anything big from the federal government, but we haven't asked either for, because that's mainly to help us with um, items for the tech. So we don't really need that at the moment. Um, and then advertising and equipment, these, those are, that's about, that's similar to what we've done in the past. That's our revenue. Um, of course, we've got plays and cinema and video games going on, and the dance and our sales for concession. Um, and like I said, the cultural brand that we have. That's why we're that got us some security mess and a couple other things that we needed in there since, uh, yeah, it's a better thing to have. Sometimes we have big events, we need that security. Um. Yeah, so we're quite excited. We have Music of the Night coming up, and it's an actual fold-out event, and it's been sold out for almost a month, I wanna say. So really would have been nice if they had tonight to stay here. But we kind of are realizing some, um, different venues that people are, different, um, performances people are wanting to come and see. So that was a huge one that was quickly sold out, lots of interest, and so that's where we're at, and again, with the community, uh, comedy nights. Um, our expenses are very similar to last year, too. Uh, the salary and benefits are that eighty-five thousand. Our fixed costs are that thirteen, does take it, uh, unfortunately, that twenty thousand, that mandatory and all that. Um, and we don't have a lot of equipment that we have to purchase this year. We are, um. So that, that hundred and forty thousand that we have for expenses is very similar to last, I think it was a hundred and thirty-eight that we had allocated last year for the, oh, one twenty-five, sorry. So there's a bit more, but I want to say that we have, um. We're gonna kind of do a little bit more for our tech people, because they come in and do all this volunteering for us, to make sure that we are allocating them honorarians. And then when they get over a certain amount, we are paying them, because if we don't have them, we don't have our facility. You don't have people that know what they're doing up top in that main room. So, um, we have a couple uh, in our asset management, that we, we manage all these things, plus the piano we have in our facility. And we paid, we paid, need to keep that, that equipment all up to date. We're having a little bit of a glitch in our electrical system. And it's not the electrical system per se, it's got something to do with the connection of lights from the stage to the tech. But it's not the soundboard stuff. This is simple electrical things that maybe they had a computer program, and they wanted it all to run on a timer. Well, that went down a couple of years ago, and they are telling us that we cannot repair it. So what we're gonna end up doing is having, um, can't from Italian to come in and assess it and see how we can simply put these things back on a programmed, something that's easy. And so we have taken ten thousand of our asset management account, and we allotted that for there. We will be working with the town and our Emma's crew to be able to do that. So we're gonna decrease our asset or that fund a little bit. And then again, we have the copper that we're replacing new in the building, because ours is worn out. We have spent many hours keeping it going and a little tweaking here and there and having the welder come over. But, uh, so now we shouldn't have bought a month, we're hoping a month, have our new copper, and it's much bigger and faster, and probably a good bit of upper. Um. So I think that's kind of where I'm at. Uh, are there any questions that you guys need to clarify with me?
Thank you, Denise. Um, we do have Counselor Taylor.
Okay.
Good question.
Thanks. Excited to hear that we're gonna have good popcorn.
I mean, always said it, of course, different popcorn.
What, how much, how much are we gonna ask for, for the town for, uh, us to provide to chat? And how's that gonna change from last year?
It's not gonna change. We're gonna, our request is to have sixty-five, or last year was sixty-five thousand. This year it's sixty-four. We thought we would be able to go down, um, last this year, but it is, we just can't do it. So our request is sixty-four thousand.
Thanks. Thank you, Counselor Taylor, uh, Counselor McGee.
I, I don't have any questions, and I know I've said it before, but I'll keep saying it. I appreciate every time you come in to present to us. It's always matter-of-fact, really well-reported, and I have no doubt that the money that is allocated is spent well, so my appreciation to everybody who's involved in Ash. It's just, it's so beneficial to have uh, that society running in our community, because, you know, when you look at the list of events that we have available uh, through, through the facility and the society, it's, it's awesome. So thanks so much.
I'll say thank you on behalf of all my.
Uh, thank you, Counselor McGee. Um. Yeah, the only guy I have to say, the one thing with the text, um, starting to pay them, we're hoping to entice more people. Uh, because it is a specialized training, and it's one of those that, you know, if we lose anybody, we don't have anybody trained. So by being able to, uh, pay them for their time, we're hoping to get some more recruits for that, so, um, hopefully that happens. And, uh, just to clarify to you, the, the pauper is going to, it's a joint between the hidden movies and the society, correct?
Yeah.
But the ownership will be the society.
Yeah, anything that gets purchased, um, for the building, kind of gets brought into the building, then it stays there, so, um. Hidden Movies has been able to attract some funds through grants or special applications to give out. And so then when they bring, they have given us the amount of money, and we've put in the other half of the money to fund that proper. So it goes back, it stays right inside that building.
No, awesome. Good. Excellent. Well, I know I like to be on the, on the committee there, and the council rapture is a great group, and, uh, yeah. Um, great job, good job, everything, so. Any other questions or comments from council? All right. Thanks, Denise. Thanks, Wendy. Great.
Oh, oh, I know. Have a good day, everybody.
So.
Okay. If we just stick around, I would.
We'll just take a quick, take a transition to our, uh, Hinton Golf Society, so. Thank you, Mister Crawford. Um, so we'll try to keep, begin the presentation above ten, so I'm sure we'll have some questions from council.
Sure.
So take it away.
I'll make it short and sweet. Um, well, again, thanks, uh, for having me out here, uh, today to, uh, show you the financials and what we're projecting for next year. Mission statement, it's kind of been the same since the start, to track and measure performance daily, striving to exceed all previous standards, rewarding the customer with amazing golf course and service-oriented facility. So, kind of wanted to highlight one of the successes that, um, the golf course had, and that's uh, repaying the town of Hinton, um, now two hundred thousand dollars of a two hundred and thirty-five thousand, three hundred and ninety-five dollar loan. Um. We did this obviously in four years at fifty thousand dollars a year, so next year will be the final year, um, with basically a thirty-five thousand outstanding to the town of Hinton. So with that coming off, that definitely frees us up to do a lot of things moving forward, so we're kind of now planning for two thousand twenty-five, where we could definitely use that additional fifty thousand dollars. Um, obviously, this golf course, we don't have a ton of money, but we can do some minor, minor things. Um, anyone who's played, we rebuilt, um, bunker, hole number, um, thirteen, the bunker. Um, myself and Andy actually went out and built that. It took us about five days with the crew. Um, each bunker, um, if we can do it in-house, saves us anywhere from five to eight thousand dollars. Um, so we're gonna try doing at least one or two a year and just kind of pick at it. Um. Everybody knows this front left area in this lower picture basically was just the weed, just collected weeds, um, and this was kind of the downstairs right from our front of our pro shop, and and our customers are seeing this, and, and it was just tons of weed, so we, the board, um, made the decision that we were gonna do a memorial garden for, um, past members. So obviously, it's not finished yet, but that's kind of what, what it's gonna look like with a lot more flowers going into next year. And then we operated and renovated the halfway shack, which is the picture on the top right. Um. This is the shack that serves alcohol, um, food, hot dog sandwiches, uh, for people that are making the turn to play eighteen holes. Um, the way the clubhouse is, we have to, the customers have to drive up to the clubhouse. It's not, um, great for pace of play. Um, so we operated the shack Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and I did, it was profitable throughout the year. Um, two thousand twenty-three challenges, um, our heating and cooling system failed a bunch of times. Um, I have gotten an initial quote back for the cooling system. It looks like a full replacement, anywhere in the twenty thousand to forty thousand dollar range. Um, the ovens in the kitchen needed repairs, that was eight thousand dollars, and then we had thirty-one thousand in just facility repairs, just upkeep. And, um, I'm pretty sure I had every tradesperson out there this year. So going into, um, here's the budget for the two thousand twenty-three, and then the year-to-date where we're sitting. Um, again, I didn't, um, give a projection for the year-end. I did a year-to-date, and this would have been October fifth, I pulled these numbers. Um, so the year-to-date expenses is just over one point five million, but budget was one point five and sixty thousand. We're basically gonna be right on that mark. Um, basically, we are still closing the golf course, and we are incurring some expenses. Um, so we do anticipate that expense number to be fairly accurate. Um, we are downgrading our expenses for two thousand twenty-four, um, due to inflation, um, especially when it comes to golf shop merchandise. Um, that extra few hundred bucks that was getting spent on, you know, the new golf wardrobe is not happening anymore. And now drivers are nine hundred dollars. Um, two years ago, they were six hundred and forty dollars. Um, so we can't sell a driver, and I totally make sense. So we, that's where the savings are for next year, is we're downgrading our shop by fifty thousand dollars in merchandise going into next season. So here's our revenue streams. Um, two thousand twenty-three, our budget was just over one point six million. Um, I looked at the financials today, and we are at one point, it was six hundred and seventeen thousand five hundred as of today. So again, we hit our revenue targets, um, that we projected you guys last year. Um, and we anticipate to go over that just a little bit, but again, everything was right on par. This two thousand twenty-four projection, basically the big increase where you're seeing this is going to be in, um, proposed memberships and daily green fee rates. Um. With everything going up, there's just no option for the golf course to keep the memberships and the rates the same. Uh, we have done this, um, for the last two years too. But it's just, things are just getting too costly, and without an increase, um, again, this, the rates haven't been approved by the board yet, so we'll see, but this is what we're projecting. If we do, um, increase our memberships and our daily rates, um, to be basically status quo to courses around Edmonton, um, and the surrounding areas. And then this is just kind of highlighting each influential category that we have. Um, and your superintendent does a great job, um, keeping our golf course in great shape. His expenses always are below what we project. So we have projected just a little bit lower than two thousand twenty-three, but as you can see, his year-to-date is three hundred and fourteen thousand, and we're projecting three seventy-seven, but if the course is doing bad, we definitely downgrade, um, and alter all those, um, all those line items, so we, uh, can save a little bit of money. Administration, uh, where are you gonna see this, the big increase, and this is more just of an accounting, uh, change? Um. Board decided that we should have all the management under a line item, um, which is gonna go into the administration category. So again, I wish, um, that was my wage, but it's, I, it's not. Um, there's three other people that are, um, in that number as well at that one hundred and seventy-six thousand, and then we are projecting two hundred and one thousand um, for a slight salary increases for several employees. Um, pro shop, this is again where you're gonna see that, uh, that changed the last, um, year-to-date, we spent a hundred and twenty-nine thousand on merchandise, and we're going down to about eighty thousand. Again, this would be the highest number. We're still trying to get that into the low sixties, mid sixty range. Again, um, probably had our best year in the restaurant. Um. We hit, um, just over half a million dollars in that restaurant. And I think, uh, we were sitting at the same table four years ago where that restaurant made seventy-seven thousand, so, um, that's, goes up to the staff that we have there, our events crew, they do a fantastic job, and I think that's a number that is repeatable year after year. Um, is that half a million dollars in that restaurant. And that's, that's it.
Okay, thanks, Mister Crawford. Counsel. Counsel for McGee.
Uh, thank you, Mister Chair. Uh, Kyle, thanks a lot, a lot of good information there. Uh, number one, just a congratulations. I mean, that's, that's a hard sort of weight to carry from year to year, you know, fifty thousand dollars on top of a budget that's you know, it doesn't offer a lot of margins. So I think that's something to be acknowledged, the hard work that you and the crew have done.
Appreciate it.
Over those years. And my question around F and B, because that's, again, that's good news compared to where things have been. Did you find that, uh, the bookings since really the change with COVID, uh, and some of the management changes, like, uh, the bookings have been more solid in the last year?
Well, I think when you're talking in an event business, it doesn't happen the first year. It's something that you strive to grow each year. And when you do events well, year after year, you start creating that repeat business, and sooner or later, um, you have the same Christmas party from the same company every year. Now, all you do is just add a few more Christmas parties from different companies. Well, it just slowly increases year after year, and a couple companies are like Trican, um, Stetson, they've been from day one. Um, so there's a lot of repeat business that's happening, and then we're also getting a lot of new ones, but we also did, um, I'll take eleven weddings this year. Um, and that's basically maxed out from the board. We're limited to how much weddings, because at the end of the day, it's still a golf course. They'd still like to use the facility. We understand that, and we've kind of came to that agreement in between that ten and twelve weddings, and we're comfortable with that, because maybe you don't have the staff to to run really anything more than that anyway, so we're happy into that ten and twelve wedding, so.
Thank you. Uh, I'll go back and queue it.
Uh, no, you're good.
Oh, oh, okay. Uh, just in terms of the events as well, I was wondering, um, is the golf course still moving forward with the off-season virtual golf and that sort of thing?
Yeah, so last year we continued right out of the gate, so like today, virtual golf would have started. Uh, we're taking a month. Yeah, so last year we continued right out of the gate, so like today, virtual golf would have started, uh, we're taking a month. Uh, over a month break, just because it's a little bit of a shoulder season, I think people aren't really looking at picking up the golf clubs. Um, you know, the day after the course closed, so um we did take a little bit of a loss doing it last year, so we're going to just um. Basically close the restaurant and virtual golf for a month. And then reopen when we have our banquets and everything starting up again on kind of that mid-November fifteenth range.
Thank you, thanks.
Councilor?
Yeah, good to see that uh you got the, the, the money from us almost paid off, that will be the flexibility. You got, sales went up from fifteen to forty-eight thousand, what kind of sales were those?
So, this, that's an accounting and a point-of-sale system where. It's not pulling the right category, so it goes into this generic count of just a sales. When really it should be divided into driving range and some other ones, so we're looking into it, but we haven't been able to. And it's all backend point-of-sale um stuff, but it's, it's basically. It could be anything, and we don't know exactly what revenues are pulling into that account, so. Um, our, our provider Lightspeed is looking into the backend of that, so we've just kind of. Anticipated that that might just continue as a line item, um instead of dispersing it into all the other revenue lines.
Thank you.
Uh, I just have one quick question, and I, I'm assuming because you clarified for me the admin, the management that it's accounting. But nothing has changed mana- management-wise, then it's all the same positions, it's just in that one line item.
That's exactly it, good, yeah.
Thank you. Okay, counsel, any other questions for Mr. Crawford?
And just uh on our behalf, we aren't, we aren't asking for um any type of um financial aid or. For the next season, so, so um we're anticipating with our increase that the projects that we are looking at doing. Will be able to be covered by, by the club.
Excellent, sorry, I do have one follow-up with that, so.
Alright, council.
Sorry, uh, Mr. Crawford, uh, one of the, one of the things that I certainly have been sensitive to over the years. Is that we've always found that if there's a pinch point, it's been communication for whatever reasons. You know, between uh council and the board, um. And then now with the unique relationship we have with the way the facilities and the assets are. Um, that's been, you know, it's complicated, just that much more. From a high level, are there any concerns from you or the board in terms of communication? Do you feel like everything's okay? Because that's one of those things where I'd just rather not be sort of following up on it and finding out that there's an issue.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, just speaking on, from what I hear from the board is they would love to have a councilperson sit. Um, on the board and in the meetings and, and to rela- let relay some information back and forth. In terms of how I get my information with administration, I have no problem. I, I get my information from administration within mostly the same day, so on that. Um, it's great, but yes, I think the board would like to see. A councilperson, but I can't speak for everyone, but I think they, I think the majority would like to see that, again.
If I could just speak on that, and it just again, I think that one complication is the fact that it's a controlled asset. And we had, you know, it's.
Well, that's.
That pinch point.
For sure.
Yeah, it's, but again, if there was a way to work through that, I know for myself that would be good.
Yeah, I agree, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, counsel, alright, thank you, Mr. Crawford.
Thank you.
Presentation.
Thank you.
Your time. So that'll move us on to now reports from administration, we're gonna start with five quick lines. Which is the overview of the uh applications for the two thousand twenty-three community grant application. CEO Vanessa.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, and through the chair to the rest of committee, this item is simply an outline to provide committee with an advanced look. At the two thousand twenty-three fall intake community grant applications. There were seven new applications in addition to one that had been deferred from the spring intake. And another from the spring intake that had been incorrectly disqualified. Subsequently, one of the new applicants offered to, uh, in the fall had offered to defer their application to the spring twenty twenty-four intake. Resulting in a total of eight applicants to the vault intake, and they're requesting a total of just under forty-six thousand dollars. Uh, the current remaining budget in the community grant allocation for twenty twenty-three is just over twenty-four thousand. Um, the report provides just a few lines in summary about the projects and the name of the group along with a link for further information about them. And with that, I'll take any questions that you may have.
I have one to clarify, so has this gone through the committee already? And they, these are the decisions of the committee?
Oh, thank you for the uh question, no, the committee is in the process of assessing uh the applications, this is just an advanced check, a sneak peek for committee. Prior to receiving the recommendations from the, from the committee at uh the next council meeting.
Okay. So, if I may, um, because I have one con- uh, I don't know if it's concern or uncertainty of one of them, and I believe they did. Apply last one, which was the Alberta narcissistic abuse survivors from the engine. And I'm all for trauma and force counseling and therapeutic workshops, and therefore the, thus, but. I've investigated it, I cannot find them at all and any information on whatsoever. So I'd be really, when it comes to council for final decision, I'd be really looking for more information on that particular one. Um, because the only thing I can find is they're at a Cochrane. And I'm not sure how much services they might be providing us in the town of Hinton for that, so um. And for myself, the other question I have is the iron and earth, i- it seems like this is a. I, I've never heard of this before, but it seems like they've been in Hinton already providing some sort of service, there are. Their third, I think it's their third and final input session, um so I'm not familiar with this iron and earth to, to be honest, so. If, if you can make any comments now, that'd be great, if not, it's just to highlight those, because. Last time we had some questions on specific ones, and it's for me, the committee can answer some of that, that would be great.
So I can make some comments uh through, through yourself to the rest of committee about it. Um, the, all of the applicants will be assessed against the current approved criteria. Some of the criteria include such things as whether or not they are a non-profit organization, whether they're a community. Uh, not-for-profit, which means say, are they hinting base? Um, also, of course, the effects that the project would is likely to have in the community or purported to have in the community, you know, it has to have certain. Uh, benefits that, that we'll be looking at, the uh, the eligibility criteria uh assessment has been done on all of these. One of the applicants I've asked for a little bit more information on behalf of the committee, but the committee will look at. The benefits and all the criteria that I'm expressing, plus a few more that I'm not remembering off the top of my head and. And you'll get a rundown of each of these, the more detailed, as well as the committee's recommendation, so, yeah.
Thank you, counsel, any other questions on the report or counselor?
Uh, thanks, Mr. Chair, I just, I appreciate the report. Uh, it was really great to sort of get that heads up to see what was coming down the pipeline, so for myself, thanks, much appreciated.
Counsel? Counselor Stashik?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, no question or anything, just like to move that uh. Committee refers to the matter of the two thousand twenty-three fall applications to the community grant program to a future regular meeting of council.
Thank you, Counselor Stashik. So, Counsel of the Direction, Counselor Taylor, any questions?
So that means it'll come back with the uh grant committee's recommendations at that time.
Is correct, yeah.
Good, that's fine, thanks.
And then just one more question for myself, that's coming up soon, I'm assuming, in October, in about October?
The current schedule for that is for the October seventeenth regular council meeting.
Excellent, okay, thank you. Counsel, any other questions on the direction? Seeing none, I'll call the question then. That committee refers to the matter of the two thousand twenty-three fall applications to the community grant program to a future regular meeting of council. Also, please look now. And that is carried unanimously, thank you, counsel, thank you, administration. Next, we're moving on to five point two manufactured home designation for municipal assessments. Uh, turn this over to CEO Vanessa.
Thank you, Chair, I will turn it to Ms. Porbo.
Uh, good evening and thank you, uh, in July of twenty twenty-three, administration. Brought a report on some of the outstanding debt for the mobile home park. And in that meeting, it was requested that we bring this item back to committee for further discussion. The report erroneously said that I attached a draft copy of a bylaw that has been used to the community. That did not happen, my apologies, uh, but we can certainly attach that. But what was attached to the report was some information that administration has gathered on. Communities that have moved forward with passing this type of bylaw and those who started the process but did not. And uh, I'm just here for any questions that committee may have and looking for direction if. You would like us to bring a bylaw back to council and if there's also direction on community engagement that you'd like to see.
Thank you, administration. Counselor Taylor?
Um, my question is, uh, is this a one-size-fits-all kind of arrangement? Because when I look at the table that you have here, there's two trailer parks. That haven't had outstanding taxes at all, or don't have them very much, and then there's two trailer parks that have a lot, seem to have a significant. Uh, a number of outstanding property taxes that we, this was getting looked at. To help deal with that problem, so is it possible to um consolidate the. Um, taxes for the parks where we're having problems and leave the ones that are, where everything's okay alone?
Uh, through the chair to all of committee, it is my understanding at this point that it is a bylaw that would cover all of them. Um, the same as your properties, your single family or properties land attached, there's the same process that you follow through. Regardless if you have difficulty collecting in some areas of town or not, so. But we could definitely check with legal, but in our readings up to date, it is one-size-fits-all, if it's in place, it would be in place for all of the mobile parks.
Right, well, that would be my question, if it would be possible to separate it, so that if some trigger was met. And there was a problem in these parks, we deal with them separately than the parks where there's no problems. You know, the trigger could be percentage of outstanding properties that are, taxes are owed or something like that, greater than fifteen percent or whatever. That would seem like a.
Through the committee, I can definitely research that, I believe our opportunity is quite slim, but I will do further research.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Taylor, Counselor McGee.
Yeah, uh, I, thanks to Counselor Taylor for that question, because I'd definitely like to know the answer to that too and see what our options are. Um, Ms. Porbo, if I can just ask, and really it's also for uh the public as well, one of the complications with. And correct me if I'm wrong, one of the complications with outstanding taxes on a unit is the fact that if um. If a unit's taxes are uncollected, um, and then the inhabitants moved away and essentially the amount of taxation. It seems the value of the trailer, um, it essentially sort of gets stuck in winbow. Uh, where the, the owner of the, the mobile home facility can't really do much with that particular property, it's. Basically a bit of a write-off, because there's taxation sitting against the property, and that's where we begin to see a lot of these units. Uh, that are left, that, you know, sort of go into decay and, and bring down the quality of life for those people in that area, is that, is that an accurate sort of summary? What's happened in the past?
Through to all of committee, I, yes, it is, um, fairly accurate, the process for collection. On manufactured homes is different than properties with land attached, land attached, you, of course, you have Alberta registries, Alberta land titles. Where there is that mechanism where we are notified immediately when a change of. Change of hand, hands occurs on that property, with manufactured homes, we don't always have that. Ability to know when they have changed hands, and you are correct, quite often, the uh. Outstanding debt has, is, is not. Re, is no longer belonging to the person that may currently live there, which does make it more problematic.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And if I could follow up on that, then Counselor Taylor, so with that. And then we can't find, then it's actually the rest of the town taxpayers that are flipping that bill, because we're basically writing it off. Because we're unable to collect that money, is that correct?
Uh, through the committee, that is correct, that is not an expense uh to all of the repayers of the town.
Mm-hmm, okay. Um. Uh, I'll put counsel, Counselor Taylor.
Uh, my preference uh would be rather than go straight to the bylaws, since we already know that there could be problems, um. Is going for uh engage stakeholders to get uh some sort of information uh back on that first. Just a thought.
Are you making that motion?
Uh, sure, I could. Uh, the committee requests administration to engage the stakeholders and bring a report to council before uh November thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three.
Okay, council, we have a. Motion on the table, um, I've got myself and then Counselor McGee.
My, my.
No, if you can speak to it.
No, I think, I think uh we, we already know that there might be problems, that's uh, that's just to me a. Uh, kind of cautious way to go about doing it, and uh. Learn the ins and outs about what people in the town think before we do something that'll uh maybe put extra costs on the people. I want to, the only, my only question on that motion before you open up discussion, because I could still change it until that point, it would be uh. Stakeholders, I kind of like what some of these towns have done, they went to both the park owner and then they went to the residents, is that what you mean, we mean by stakeholders in that one? That's my motion, I guess, I should be uh, that's what I mean by stakeholders, that's what I guess I'm saying.
Through the committee, we appreciate that clarity.
Sorry, it's not really a question.
Okay, so counsel, it's open for discussion now, this motion, I've got myself and the Counselor McGee and Counselor Stashik. Um. I guess where I'm at is first of all is figure out what we can do, uh, I'm not gonna support this right now. I think we need to know a little bit more of the legal opportunities we have. And understand that better, and then take that to the stakeholders and uh bring a report afterwards. Uh, because right now, we're, we're, if we do just to the stakeholders, we don't know what we can and cannot do. If we can do it separately, then it might solve all the problems, if we can't, then maybe there's another solution, so. I'm not gonna support this requen- this motion at this time, um, and that's where I'm at on that, Counselor McGee.
Yeah, for myself, before I vote, uh, what I'd need to know from administration. What the timeline would be for getting that legal-based information back on what, what our options are as a community in terms of sort of splitting out. The response, whether we sort of do have any legal receivers, where we can differentiate between which properties we're talking about. Because I, I believe there's a clear difference in, in issue here.
Uh, through the committee, excuse me, there is. On one of the bylaws that is in effect in one of the communities, they do have a designation as in the number of units that would need to be in a park. Before it could qualify, so that is the direct thing that I would be working at in going to legal. Um. Administration could certainly bring a report on that back to. Committee before November thirtieth and potentially have the draft bylaw at the same time, should you want to move forward. I will caution that um if you're also considering stakeholder engagement as an opportunity for any of this. You do require the bylaw to be in effect for one full year before it actually becomes in effect, so we would have to pass it by. December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, it would remain in effect, but the town would still be responsible for collecting the taxes. In twenty twenty-four, and then in twenty twenty-five, that bonus would go to the mobile park community. So if we. Uh, do the uh legal opinion and then decide on stakeholder engagement. There's a good possibility in order to do proper engagement and hear. Everything back from people, December might be a rather tough time to put people through responding to that, and they may lose that opportunity.
Thank you, administration, Counselor McGee.
Yeah, if I could just finalize my thoughts on that, for myself, I think it would be helpful to understand that legal lever. First, before we sought any potential feedback from citizens. If only to ensure that citizens had a full spectrum of what our options were or weren't. Before we go to the community, because I would hate to, to find out from administration after we begin uh citizen feedback. That we have more or less options available to us, it's just so that we have our citizens who are more informed about what our options are. Okay, thank you.
Counselor McGee, Counselor Stashik.
Mr. Chair, if I could just request clarification, what is the motion that's on the table right now?
The second recommendation.
I may then?
Yep.
I'm a little bit confused where the direction to administration to go, well, you get a legal opinion about something came through. I'm a little bit confused where the directions or administration to go well and get a legal opinion about something came from.
There isn't one right now, I guess that that there.
So that's my concern, the administration's going off doing work. Um, offering to bring back a report and there isn't actually a direction from council that will do that, right, sorry from committee?
Right.
So right, right now. If this is the motion that's before us, I don't know why we're discussing anything about getting a legal report first. There is an emotion. The motion is just to engage stakeholders and bring a report to council.
Yes. Fair enough. If I can clarify for myself, uh, I guess the reason I brought that up is I'm more leaning towards number one. I'd like to see that first. I don't want to start with the stakeholders, but you're correct, we're arguing something that hasn't, isn't, is in motion. Council McGee?
Yeah, and I suppose clarification for my own part, and I apologize that I heard administration say that that. That could form part of the the report that comes back to us, but Counselor Stashik's right, there is no direction from council, so yeah, for my part, I I apologize.
Counsel Stashik, any or anything? Counsel Taylor?
Um, yeah, well, I'm actually gonna vote against my motion. Because uh I think you were right that we should get that information. My preference is to get that information, so I'm gonna vote against that. But I'm gonna, but my preference then would be to put a motion to get to get um, you know, a report or legal opinion on our options. Before we uh go ahead with the bylaw. That's, that's, so I don't favor, I don't favor jumping from two to number one, I favor jumping from number. Get over to number two and then going to get more information and then uh figuring out what we want to do. Okay, just so, that's, just tell you, thank you, you too, changed my mind, thank you.
Okay. All right, so we do have the direction, uh, we can have that up on the screen, please. Thank you. Uh, so currently we have the direction that committee requests. Administration to engage the stakeholders, provide, no, that's not the one, it's the second one, is David Campbell.
That is the second one.
No, committee requests administration to engage stakeholders and bring a report to council. Before November thirtieth, there's no legal opportunity comment or anything in there. At least that's what's in our package. But read committee requests. Administration to engage the stakeholders and bring a report to council before November thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Hey, council, is there any more discussion or anything on this one? Uh, if you can bring up that one on the screen now, we still have the old one. There we are. So council called the question and the committee requests administration to engage the stakeholders and bring a report to council before November thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Please vote now, committee. And that is defeated by zero. Thank you, council, for committee. Committee, any other direction? And one other recommended one or? Other options? Council McGee?
Uh, thank you, Mister Chair, I, and of course I beg the indulgence of everybody, because this is one of those ones that's actually evolved out of our conversations. Try to capture well, um, would like to move. That. Many direct administration. To prepare. Options. Sorry, legal options. Or consideration. In relation to. Individual. Mobile home parks. And. Taxation collection. And really, I'm gonna have to lean on administration to see if this captures the flavor of our conversation. Through the chair, uh, yeah, I believe that captures a conversation, I think that's clear. And I, you know what, Mister Chair, I don't need to speak to this, we already really have it one way or another, so also leave it to council.
Hey, council, we have no direction. Comments or questions? Counsel Stashik?
Uh, thank you, Mister Chair, I just have a question about timelines and when. Administration thinks that they could bring this report back for committee's consideration to get. Further direction. Um, and the reason I ask is because of of uh what was alluded to by administration earlier, what the December thirty-first. Deadline for having then a bylaw passed, if that's the November council, to be able to have it implemented for twenty twenty-five.
Okay, administration, can we? Elaborate on that timeline?
Uh, through the chair, I think November seventh will work. Um, but this will just due to the timeline, the tight timelines, if we do want to go to stakeholder engagement, this will become a uh. A top priority for us to do from now until the end of the year, to give us that time for implementation of twenty twenty-five.
I can call, just to clarify then, if it did come back to. The B committee on seven, that's regular, isn't it?
Oh, yeah.
You know, we don't have, we haven't done our, we haven't done our uh. Planning for years, we don't have set meeting names, but I can keep the same schedule what we've said, it would be a regular meeting of council.
Uh, through the chair, yes, I believe you're correct, we keep the same schedule, that would be a regular, um, so I think the goal would. Likely be uh bringing this forward. Towards the end of October, but I believe that committee has also been canceled, uh, in lieu of budget meetings. Uh, through the chairs, members of council, uh, possibly a solution to that, if that we break this forward to a regular council meeting for discussion. Uh, instead of ran that it within the schedule that we have for the committee of all meetings, just on this. The individual topic, just because we will be under uh some time constraints. Alternatively, we could look at possibly setting some special meetings, but I think it could be handled. Um, at least initially through the November seventh regular council meeting.
But just to point out, yes, I'm I'm fine with that, if it's appropriate for not to come back to a regular, I would be fine with that. And just to clarify then, if that were the case and administration was given. The direction of that time to move forward with them, it could still be completed, and you find it so that it was supplied.
Thank you, Council Stashik, yeah, it sounds like it.
Yeah, that's a question, sorry.
Yes, we could.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
I have myself and then Council Taylor.
No, no.
No, you're good?
Not necessarily.
So. I I appreciate, we're, I guess my my. Desire, I wasn't in favor of just stakeholder and then bring, but I would prefer actually aligning them. We can still get stakeholder feedback while getting the and get the feedback from the stakeholders. While we're getting the legal, and then we've got two things off. The table for later to make that decision, so I preferably, I I can't. Support the way it is right now, if we would go with the recommendation to both engage stakeholders and provide a legal. Uh, and doing it in at the same time. I think that then at least we have the stakeholders, we then have the legal opinion, we hear what the stakeholders say. And can the legal opinion address that? If it can, then we have a decision to make, we know how the stakeholders feel. So that's my, that would be my preference, um, so. I'm I'm not gonna be in favor of this without the stakeholder at the same time. Thank you. And Counsel Taylor?
Well, I think I am, because I just heard there was time to do both and sequential. So, okay, I don't see that that that, I don't see a. So, a a problem, it made sense what you said originally, which was that you do one, then you know what you're consulting on. I thought that made sense when you said it first.
Okay. Thank you, Counsel, oh. To you.
Uh, to the chair, if I could. If there is an appetite to include, if council's desire is to ultimately go to stakeholder engagement, I think. If that could be included in the motion, I think there are some aspects to stakeholder engagement, if the. Expectation is that we're gonna be going out to the mobile home residents for uh. Um. For comments, uh, and the reason I say that is because at the end of the day, you know, the question to all of those mobile. Um, owners will be the same as, you know, the taxes are either coming from the municipality or being flown through your uh your managing body. Uh, but the question will be the same for all of those. I think the big, the the more in-depth conversation will likely even to mobile. Park owners, um, but if we do have. Um, if we do have some stakeholder engagement included in the motion, at least we could get a start on what I think would be a larger process, which would be the. The mobile home. Uh, uh. Owners, so we certainly could use some in subsequent. And uh alongside getting this reports, uh, and then we could do possibly more in-depth with the mobile. Our owners later on in the process.
Okay. Counsel Stashik?
Thank you, Mister Chair, that was pretty much going to be my question as well as. Would be to administration and what the risk would be in option one, which is engaging stakeholders, but also getting. Uh, legal opportunity content comment and then having that come back as a report. Yeah, I I'm so, I would need an answer, I would need to, I I would need a better understanding of what the risk would be. To to do them in conjunction, rather than doing them separately before I would know how I would vote on the motion that's currently on the table.
Okay, thanks. Administration, any comments on the risks, doing them together or separate?
Uh, through the chair, I think the timeline just gets a little bit tighter. Um, I think we can do it, I just don't think we're gonna have a lot of time to go over what I would say. Uh, very in-depth stakeholder engagement, if that's council's intention. We certainly can, there'd be a very tight turnaround on all of that, um. You know, I think the first thing is to get that legal opinion and then we be looking at at least starting the public engagement process or the advertisements. Uh, uh, this is what we're looking at and getting some input from the mobile home park owners. But at least we could start a part portion of that process, just uh hopefully speaking as much as we can. I I don't believe we'll have any stakeholder engagement for the seventh, but at least that process is already. Pretty well underway for later on when that bylaw does come forward and at least the events are well informed of what's going on.
Okay, thank you, administration, Counsel Stashik.
Oh, yeah, if I could follow up, then I I'm actually not going to be in support of the uh motion that's before us. I want to make sure that there is an opportunity for stakeholder engagement, I also want to make sure we get. The legal opinion, but I don't see why they can't be done in conjunction and to. If to give the best opportunity for a full robust. Uh, feedback opportunity from all the stakeholders and to give the longest timeline possible. So I'm not gonna support this, but I'm hopefully looking forward to uh. Option one being put on the table if this one doesn't pass, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Stashik. I have Counsel Taylor and then Council McGee. Counsel Taylor? Wouldn't I just make an amendment to add stakeholder engagement to that uh motion? Yes, you can, Counsel Taylor, if you wish.
Cause uh, sounds like it's possible. So if I could, I would.
Okay, so if we could uh then orchestrate the wording. To add stakeholder. To engage stakeholders, is that what you're looking?
Direct administration to prepare legal options for consideration in relation to individual home parks and taxation collection. In conjunction with stakeholder engagement.
Okay.
That captured.
So we can have that then amendment? Would be to engage in stakeholder.
Engage in conjunction.
In conjunction.
I think that's maybe what we've been thinking, talking about.
And that would be a separate motion. No, we have to vote on the amendment, amendments. Yes.
Your, your, the amendment.
In conjunction with stakeholder, um. Engagement.
With with stakeholder engagement, right?
Yes, yeah. So if we can just have the in conjunction with stakeholder engagement in a separate motion, that's.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mister Chair, before the motions put on the table?
Yes, I may, yeah. I I would like to add a a date to that, if possible. We can make that part of here anyway.
Thank you, Counsel Stashik. Counselor Taylor, you look for administration for a date?
Yeah, perfect.
Okay. Administration?
Uh, through the chair, I believe our uh. Our legal opinion or legal option uh report would likely come forward November seventh. Uh, stakeholder stakeholder engagement, I believe, would be later on in the process when the bylaw comes forward.
Okay. So would that, yeah.
So it'd be reasonable then to put the November thirtieth um deadline that was proposed in option one originally?
Through the chair, I'm uh. Yeah, I agree with that.
Okay, so we get in conjunction stakeholder provided by November thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, Counsel Taylor?
Perfect, thank you, appreciate that.
Okay. So now, council, we have amendments. And will be, and if we can have a discussion around the amendment, any? Discussion, Counsel Stashik?
I did have a question regarding stakeholders, do we have a current definition of who the stakeholders would be in this scenario?
Administration?
Through the chair, at least my understanding, I'll look to Ms. Porbo if there's another one, but my understanding is just being about uh. Um, owners and the mobile home park owners.
So my follow-up question, then I guess since this is when. When the property owners default on their taxation and the town ends up having to write it off. It's the taxpayers at large who wind up having to cover the shortfall for that. So my my question would be, why would the taxpayers at large not be considered stakeholders in this and be. Allowed the opportunity to offer their opinion on if they feel that that's. Or fair and appropriate or not? And I don't know if that question's to administration, council, or who, but I would think taxpayers should have an opportunity to voice their opinion on this matter as well.
And from council's perspective, if I can, I would hundred percent agree with that, I think that we all are impacted by that, and this is something that's gonna impact all of us, so. But I would be interested too in what administration.
Through the chair, I don't disagree with that assessment, um. You know, we can certainly try, but I think this is gonna be a difficult public education process, because this is a little bit. Complex in how we have to do it, but I think we could. And I, I think we could do it, I just don't think we'll have a very good response from the general public as this is uh. And I would say more of a legal process that's in the weed on collection process, and it's difficult to really get the general public. Uh, to speed on that, um, in such a short period of time, we could certainly try and we could certainly open up public engagement to the general public. Uh, with some, with some materials available, uh, I I have no issues with that.
Council? So, if I may. I realize it it is part of this and stake. I realize that it, it is part of this and stakeholders, to, to clarify stakeholders, um. Even if it may be difficult, it gives the opportunity, and that also then. Might suggest if no one is, that no one responds to it, that it's not as big a deal as maybe we think it is, but. In my experience, you know, uh. Some don't like that idea and would be able to respond to it, so I would like to see that stakeholders include. Mobile home owners, the landowners, and, and the general public as well, honestly. But we probably have to clarify that with the motion or in the amendment to clarify what stakeholders are. Not only able to do that, but it's time.
Through the chair, um. I, I don't know if we need another amendment to, I think I got it, uh. Uh, I'm clear on our, our direction and we'll include that open to the general public as well.
Okay. Councillor McGee, you have a statement on the amendment, okay?
Sorry, ma'am, Mr. Jack.
Okay.
Perfect, uh, just because I think now's the time to, to speak for the, the stakeholder engagement side of things, I'm certainly supportive of this. Number one, it gets all of council on board. Uh, it, it deals with both the stakeholder engagement side of things and the original motion. When it comes to the specifics around stakeholder engagement, and I realize this is, this is really tough for administration. Uh, because you're trying to capture a lot of nuance in, in that public engagement piece, but for myself. Um, I'm supporting this with the understanding that a lot of the issues that have been brought to council. From a, a number of these stakeholders. Uh, you know, revolves around what, what does this look like to people who are on the ground, right? These are the abandoned trailers that are filled with. Dirty needles and that they're unsafe. And that people have, you know, have been coming to us saying, geez, please do something about this, my kids live next door. You know, and, and having some options so that it's not just a matter of. Okay, council's looking at. Changing the way we potentially collect taxation on parks. Do you have anything to say? Cause I think the answer to that, for the most part, the default setting is no. Unless you were specifically engaged in what does this look like for me, and how does this impact my world? And then by the same token. How is this going to change the way your taxes are collected? Well, it doesn't change your assessment, your assessment value stays the same. Your trailer hasn't suddenly become worth more because somebody else is paying for it, it's worth the same. Right, so that's, that's contingent, that needs to be clearly communicated. And I certainly don't want to tell administration their, their business, but I just hope that if we support this side of the, uh, the amendment. That, uh, all of those avenues of communication are fully explored, so that people, they really know what they're potentially supporting or not supporting. Thanks.
Council, any other comments on the, uh, amendment? Councillor Taylor?
Yeah, it looks like at least half these people on this list that have done this before did some sort of engagement. At some point in the process.
Okay. Alright, council, so we're gonna be open for stuff.
Right, just before you.
Yep.
Yeah, before we call it, question, I think councillor McGee brings up a really good point. In that, and, and that's part of why I was advocating for full. You know. A full. Opportunity for engagement. Because I think this is an opportunity for park owners who have had problems with these derelict trailers to be able to better. More quickly and more easily deal with them and not have them hanging in the park, being a. Magnet for squatters, for illegal activity, things like that, uh, and that they're not. Sitting there occupying space on a pad that could be rented to. You know, people that are, are contributing to the, to the benefit of the park and then paying your taxes and they're paying their bad rent. It's, it's a challenge for the park owners to have these derelict properties there as well. And it becomes a challenge for everybody to deal with them, not just the town, it's the park owners, the town, the neighboring residents. I think this is an opportunity to, to, to take a step to, to maybe be able to expedite that process and help be able to. Make the parks better places for the residents and the owners.
Thank you, councillor Stasher. And that myself, and, and I too appreciate councillor McGee's, cause it also brings up, uh. I find that. If there's additional service fees, as long as it's benefiting. The residents and, and the safety of them and, and all the thing to get a value for it, I think people are more willing on, and find a way. Uh, that may be increased somewhat for administrative costs to do it, but in, in the long run, I think it is. In, in a way protecting those landlords from, like you said, getting rid of these derelict property. Properties and, and all the time it takes to get them and go through council and everything like that, so, yeah, I definitely think there's some. Some de- definite benefits to this, and I agree, all the stakeholders, we need to hear from everybody, so. So I'm hoping that administration's captured that, is that clear? Uh, councillor Race, you have a comment? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, can you hear me? I, I think it's important, and I will support this amendment, I think it's very important that we hear from everybody. But it is so important that we hear from the, the trailer park owners to see. How this will impact them and what will flow down to the tenants, that's my concern. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, councillor Race. Alright, council, any other? Final comments before we call to question the amendment? Seeing none, we can see the amendment, please. Our committee, so we're currently just, uh, voting on the amendment. Which is to add in conjunction with stakeholder engagement by November thirtieth, twenty twenty three. Please vote now. And that is carried unanimously, so if we can add that now to the original. Motion, please. Alright, and if we can then just take a look at councillor McGee. Is your, your motion?
Yeah, that, I think that clearly reflects the discussion on the amendment, thank you.
Okay, thank you, just, councillor McGee. Uh, council, any other final comments or questions on the direction before we call to question? Councillor Taylor?
So to my mind. What that's doing. Prepare legal options for consideration in order to relation to individual. Mobile home parks. Legal options. Due to, uh. These outstanding tax issues. That's essentially what we're asking for, whether we have the option to separate parks based on whether that's a significant problem or not. That's what I'm hoping comes back. Correct?
Administration, that's the intent, whatever legal options. Are available to us.
Through the chair, that's correct, thank you, yes.
Alright. Alright, council, we'll call the question, committee called the question, then the committee direct administration to prepare legal options for consideration. In relations to individual mobile home parks and taxation collection in conjunction with stakeholder engagement by November thirtieth. If you could please vote now. And that is carried unanimously, thank you, council and administration. Council, district, council, is there anything further on? Five point two? Okay, so we're gonna move on then to five point three, Portis Alberta electric. Franchise fee and, uh. CEO Financier.
Thank you, Chair, and I will turn this one over to Ms. Borbo as well.
Thank you, committee, uh, before you is the, uh. Request from Portis Alberta to make them aware of any changes that, uh. You may wish to make to the annual franchise fee, uh, currently the Portis Alberta fee is at eleven point. Seventy-three percent, if I am following correctly, um. With the forecast for their, uh. Their business in, in Hinton for the year, uh, the fee will increase. I'm sorry, I have a pounding headache right now and I'm just struggling.
That's okay. Uh, Mr. Chair, can we take a recess so administration can sort of have a second?
I mean, we can do that, yeah.
Thank you.
Biological, council will take a five-minute recess. Thank you, councillor McGee.
I, you know what, that was as self-serving as anything.